Okay, our clock doesn't quite say it, but officially it's a seven o'clock. So I'm gonna open up the monthly meeting of the Board of Trustees and as always, we'll start with the pledge.
Our pledge begins to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with the clerk, please call the roll.
Justice Madison.
Here.
I'm here, I'll be there.
Justice Latver?
Yeah.
Justice Vesel?
Here. Here. And we'll go on to item number three, but before we do, I just want to say we've got a couple of events tonight. We're gonna badge a couple of lieutenants. We're gonna recognize a long-term employee of the village. So both of those are things that pretty much only happen once in a lifetime. If you're here for either of those events and you wanna move your seat so that you can see better, or if there's anybody here that wants to take pictures, you're welcome to stand up, move, get where you are comfortable to get the best view possible because it's the only chance you're gonna get to see it. We'll do the ceremonies right here in the very front, so if you wanna come up on the side to get close enough to take a picture or whatever, that's fine. And at that point, I'm going to move around to the front. I'll put my agenda up here, and then I'll call Larry. So item number three is to recognize Larry DiMarco. Larry, do you want to line up? I've been fortunate enough to recognize a lot of people since I've been mayor. You really try to take the people that either do something for the village or have been long-term employees for the village and make sure that you know that we who run things appreciate what people do. I've never had more questions about what tonight was gonna be like than I had from anybody besides Larry and his wife, who know exactly what to do. So I'm hoping it goes right, Larry. I hope it goes right. So for those that don't know, Larry was a police officer for us for about 28 years. Back in the day, our police officers used to carry a playing card like this. And when they had a positive interaction with a resident, especially with a kid, they would give out their playing card, and the kids in the village were encouraged to get the playing card of every officer, and that was just a technique so that the children in the village would get some of the officer. So I had the officer, and had a little bio about him. And on the back of the card, it had a personal message. Larry's personal message was, "Treat people with respect, and you will get respect in return." And I think that pretty much sums up the way Larry has been in his service to the village for the 28-plus years that he was here. So Larry retired from policing with us, but he couldn't stay away. After he's retired, he came back, went and first started our park guard program and served as a park guard for us. And then when that stint was over, we needed somebody to manually change the sign. So he would be out there no matter what the weather and change the sign for us, whether it's coming across the street with all the events and all that on it. Until about a month and a half ago, when we got an electronic sign, and we put Larry out there. So I'm not promising that we'll live him forever, but at this point, he's pretty much completed his service to the village. So at this point, Larry, I'm gonna recognize you with a proclamation. Let me read it. It says, "A proclamation to honor Larry DiMarco. Whereas Larry DiMarco served the villages of Scotia as a police officer for 28 years, heading the rank of sergeant. And whereas Larry DiMarco took an active role in his community as a member of the Scotia Rotary, the St. Joseph's Choir, and as a Little League and Babe Ruth coach. And whereas Larry DiMarco further volunteered his time as a member of the Memorial League Parade Committee and with the Scotia Glenville Food Pantry. And whereas Larry DiMarco continued to serve the village in his retirement as a park guard and caretaker of the community sign, now therefore be a resolved that the mayor and board of trustees recognize Larry DiMarco for his exemplary dedication and service to our village and declare August 10th, 2015 to be Larry DiMarco Day in the villages of Scotia." So thank you very much.
I'd just like to say a few words. I came on the job in 1975. I lived in the city of Connecticut, and I moved here. And it was the greatest thing I ever did. I enjoyed working for the public. I met many, many people. And over the years, I had good times, my bad times. Everyone here was a member of my group. Thank you.
At this point, I'm gonna go to item number four. I call Keith Phillips. Is he here, Michael? And she called up. So we got an unusual situation tonight. We're gonna badge these guys as the events. So typically, we did our normal fashion. At this meeting, I would ask the board to move to appoint them as sergeant. I would swear them in, and then the chief would put the badge on and do it on one ceremony. But we needed these guys right away, so they agreed to an abbreviated ceremony for their swearing-in. They've actually been on the job for, I don't know, a few weeks now. And but at this point, we'd like to do the badging at our regular monthly meetings. It's recorded, it's open to the public and all that, so that's what we have to do. So I'm gonna step aside as a non-fire matic person, and I'm gonna let the chief ask these guys virtually how they're doing. And before they step down, I just wanted to say one last, one other thing. I've been involved in Scotia politics for about 13 years now. I'm trustee for four, I've been mayor for nine years, so I've seen a lot of changes go on. And where we are right now in our fire department is, I think the fire department now is as young as it's ever been. We've got a couple of young guys, dynamic guys moving into leadership roles. So I couldn't be any prouder of all the guys that we have in the fire department, but also the guys that are moving up now to start to take leadership roles here. So congratulations to you guys.
Congratulations.
And then typically, at an evening like this, we take a five-minute recess. The people who are here only to see this part of the ceremony, you're welcome to filter your way out. After five minutes, we're gonna go back to our agenda and finish the rest of the evening. You're welcome to stay if you'd like to go.
18 Glen Avenue, which puts me directly behind the liquor store and alongside First National Bank parking lot. I'm curious if you have been approached by CVS yet about the possibility of a new building for them?
No.
Okay. It's coming. I have that on very good authority. Because I also work at Jeanette's, which conceivably would be effective along with the liquor store building and something fishing. And just so you know, one of my concerns is going to be, if this is something that the village wants to consider letting them do, drainage is going to be a major issue. Snow removal is gonna be an issue because they're not good neighbors. When that building was proposed close to 20 years ago with Revco, I was here at all the planning board meetings, and one of the things that Revco was required to do was not to have snowbanks piled up in their parking lot. And if you've ever driven through there in the wintertime, you see a very, very large one on the Glen Avenue end of their parking lot and another one directly behind 222 Glen Avenue, which in her case potentially causes water issues. Another issue is the traffic that goes through the CVS parking lot currently. People race down Second Doggo Road to hit Glen. They race up Glen from Glen Avenue to hit Mohawk Avenue and Second Dogga. And there's also a considerable amount of traffic of people just flat-out cutting through the parking lot on the east side of the liquor store to make their way to Glen Avenue. And that's a potential continued hazard if CVS restructures that part of Mohawk Avenue. So I just wanted to give you a heads-up since you haven't heard about it and let you know that some of the things that were supposed to be done in all these years are not being done.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else here care to be here to peruse of the floor? See, no one. I'll close it. And we'll go to item number seven, which is the special use permit for 133 Vly Road. So 133 Vly Road is the old Carino's, which then became the old Disco's Market, which then became, I forget, another meat market, then it was a deli, and then finally it was closed for a good period of time. The people looking for the special use permit from us tonight were granted one about two years ago. Work on the project stalled, and since the work on the project stalled for over a year, that permit expired. So the plan is still the same. It's been to the planning board, it's been through site plan review. So their back to us just to kind of redo that special use permit. So I did check with Lewis today to make sure, because I had some concerns about the condition of the front of the building. As part of their site plan review, they're required to put landscaping in so it's not just all that weird-looking dirt. If you were by this afternoon, you'll see that they actually paved the parking lot. Next will be a sidewalk along the entire front of the property. I don't know if you call it ferry strips or lat that was put on the side of the building. Lewis is required that they take that off next to repair the building rather than cover up the damage that's on the side. So we're making sure, the planning board and Lewis are making sure that the job is done correctly. One thing that you'll notice when you look at the property is it's gonna look a little bit disjointed because the property line between Vly Road Pizza and this market basically goes right down the middle of the parking lot. And what I'm told is that Vly Road Pizza was not interested in doing improvements on their property at this time, and there's nothing that we can do to make them do it. So you'll see a new blacktop right down the middle of the parking lot, a new blacktop right across the entrance to the parking lot. When the sidewalk is born, the sidewalk before the property line stopped halfway across the parking lot. So I'm talking with Lewis about what we can do to maybe get, this goes online a little bit, to, it would seem even just for the sidewalk itself, you know, get in the sidewalk program and get that a little bit done. So we'll, you know, listen. Anyway, as far as the responsibility of the people that are doing that development at that site, I'm confident that we safeguard the village as far as it being that way. So the first item under is, not number seven is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would care to hear about providing a 133 Vly Road? Seeing that I was closing public hearing, and then I have these secret declarations. On your resolution page, you've got the secret declaration, basically calling for a negative declaration per seeker. Anybody care to?
I'll start then.
Any discussion? Would you ever say aye?
Aye.
And then item C is action. Would anybody care to move that we grant the special use permit for convenience store 133 Vly Road?
I'll start then.
Any discussion on that one? And this one, I think that we should call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Item number eight is a resolution to approve the mass gathering permit for the Burn Hills Rowing Association. We got it to be held on October 5th. Sorry, number four. And so our traffic safety committee met with the regatta people today. Initially, they had asked to close down a block of Shawnee from, basically jumping jacks already come off of Long Ave down to Heath Road. That's been modified, so it's only gonna be closed on that one Saturday from 6:00 a.m. till about 4:00 in the afternoon. Which I'm happy about, you know, I have plenty of time.
Is it Sunday?
Or Sunday, Sunday, from 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 in the afternoon. And the reason for that is they want to be able to get their shells and people in the regatta across the street back and forth from the parking, jumping jacks. The idea is to put the shells in the park for storage and then bring them across from the unit. So I think that's just, the event is getting bigger and bigger and evolving. Think they actually made some noise about next year it being a two-day event?
Yeah. The guy was very nice and very upfront, but if they could see it continue to grow, he would look to do, he called it masters, so I think it's not club, clubs. Older people on the person.
And I will just say to you that, given any cost, we're probably the park guard. Make sure, help people to cost that. Perhaps some people that regulate the parking because sometimes these big events, the people mess up the system in the parking lot, reduce the number of cars we can get in there. So any cost that the village encourages will be paid by the people who attend.
It's very popular, they seem very happy with the venue, so.
There's a lot of village residents, like the people involved in the tradition.
Yeah. Although they call it the Spartan. I don't know why they call it the Spartan.
I think originally, they had a place. They had a house. A boathouse that they were housed in, and we got a long arena, and the Scotia Club had nowhere. Initially, we had inside the fencing at the old Sewer Street Plant, but they outgrew that, and I think they joined up with Burn Hills. So anybody care to move to approve the mass gathering permit?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Item number nine is a resolution to surplus on old fire hose in the fire department. Can we be able to pressure test or test it again?
I'll start then.
Any discussion on that one? Would you ever say aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Item number 10 is your favor. The mayor's got us on the board. Get your dollar bills out. On Wednesday, September 16th, the fire department's gonna hold a muscular distribution boot drive. And the time of it is from, I think, New York time? Maybe it's from 2:00 to 6:00 o'clock. It will be conducted at two separate locations. First is Thorpe Paulston in First Street, and the second is Mohawk Avenue. So the deal that we've had with them in the past, and we'll have this here as well, is they applied for a vending permit, so it's all on the open up. The mayor pays for the cost of the vending permit, and they've already invited the department out to police in there. Also, collective Varad, after four long years of negotiation, the sewer contract was met via sign, seal, and finally deliver. We've gotten all the data that we needed in order to be able to pay our bill. The contract's been good, and we've been living under the terms. We needed some data as far as the surcharges went, the forgiveness of the surcharges to feel comfortable actually paying our bill. So we've gotten it, we've paid our bill, we're done, or it looks like we're good for the term of that contract. Andrew is proposing, actually, we've already started it, in order to change the way we do our large appliance pickup. So typically, we do it the first two weeks, April. And you put your appliances out at the curb, come to the clerk's office, pay $5 for a sticker, and then on your garbage day, we would come around and pick it up. The issue is that we would only pick up 20% of the people, or the things that were put out with stickers on them. Scavengers would come and take the rest. So we had a continual problem, first of all, people complaining that they paid $5 for a sticker and it wasn't built and took it. Second of all, we're trying to reduce the amount of scavenging here in the village, and when you have a defined event like that, they're gonna show off. It's very difficult to make not show off, even though it is against the law. So in discussion with Andrew, what we decided was if we just did it year-round, at request, we'd take away the same number of items. People wouldn't have to store their items waiting for those two weeks. We'd still charge the $5. And the way the program works now is they would come to the clerk's office, get the sticker, get an information sheet on what to do next, put the sticker at the curb, call DBW and say it's out there, and then we'll come to pick it up on appointment. So we should be selling the same number of stickers and taking away the same number of items, but it will definitely mean that there's not a two-week window where scavengers descend down the village. So, and I do have an information sheet with the whole thing outlined for you that we need to have. Thanks, Mr. Andrew. Just wanna give you an update on the wastewater treatment plan. We were scheduled, well, some of us thought we were scheduled for a meeting today on it, and some thought it was for next week. So a small group of us met, but we didn't do anything because everybody was there. So, but where we are with it is one final meeting of, where I'm gonna call the steering group, to get us to a point where we can get both courts together. And just say, here's where we are, and here's what the idea is. Do we have the support to move forward? So I think I know where all you guys stand. Obviously, when it was just a village, it didn't make a lot of sense. Turns out the town is now interested again, so it's here. So hopefully, within the next week, Andrew's taken the responsibility for putting a new meeting together. We'll be able to schedule meetings with both courts. When's our audit starting?
Monday the 14th.
Monday the 14th, so don't ask the clerk's office for anything after Monday the 14th until the audit is done. As you probably know, we do both the village proper, and then we do the court. So I met with Kristen Bodie, our good court clerk, and I told her that it's a prime opportunity for her to get the things that are most important straightened out, the reconciliations and the bail accounts. And Steve Luby, when it comes to Dusai, knows that he's going to help med for our new to make sure that those things are handled. One reminder, still looking for a chair for the special events committee for Holiday on the Ave. Do you know anybody who would like to take over an event like that? Could use somebody, and it's getting close. And finally, remember the basketball team? They won the two-state champions and championships, and we had an idea to show them the signs, recognize them then at the parade, but the signs weren't done yet, and there was some confusion. So the signs are in hand. The financing for the sign is in hand. The sites of the signs up are all staked out. All that's left to do now is to coordinate between the town and the village at a site's up. Basically, what happened was the county put in the bill for the signs themselves. The town and the village will work together to install all of the signs and properly between the county, village, and town. We'll have recognition for our basketball players. So I did call the Gazette, told them I didn't know the date it was gonna be. They'd like to send a photographer, probably do the big sign in front of the school with all our guys working on it. I did call Jamie Brockell at the school, so he's waiting for it. So we're just waiting on the town to say which is the day, and those two can be coordinated, and I'll let you know what the date is. Those are my comments. Item number 11 corresponds to the special community reports. Justice Madison. Justice Haver.
Any exciting fire department cases? No, not a board meeting. We've got the plan for next week. There's a new plan, sure, Captain Donas driving through. We're in there taking the house on Glen Avenue, Glen Avenue Road, or both ways from Glen Avenue. So I have, it's a little weird where they have the drive-in and stop and stop.
I took a look at it.
It's a lot better than it was.
By far the better of anything I've seen so far. It looked like it actually did do good work.
Yeah.
And just so you guys know, any new drives is gonna require a special use permit from this board. So I've been trying to keep in touch with Lewis, so that what happened last time was the plan went, made it through the planning board, and got to this board, and we united. And I think it was proper that we united, but obviously, the owner of the property would have forgotten that because he had gone through what he thought was a proper process. Thought this would be per from treaty, because it wasn't a good plan. This one I've given a closer eye on, and I think he might accompany us if he was ever sent. Justice Latver?
I don't know if you guys wanna have this discussion now. I'm okay, I've had a discussion without time here, but we, first time home by our program, we're trying to add some village incentive to the program. And Justice Madison's had some very good ideas, and I think we're talking generally. And I think we should start talking, you know, in more details and see what we can do. So I don't mind waiting and doing that, maybe at our next work session, or maybe at our last work session. So if we just put it on the agenda.
I'll be honest with you, I intended to do it tonight under new business, but then hearing the ideas and how involved they are, I think it might be better for the work session so we have the time to sit there and do it correctly.
And then maybe we can, Kevin and I can trade some emails or something and, you know, have a little bit more of a detailed presentation or an idea.
Right. Okay. If you want to, yes. Justice Vesel?
No report this one.
Item 12, departmental reports. Any questions about departmental reports? These sons had a first-time football game tonight, and they last night, Ken called it and come back over. I know they had catered food and everything else, so. Anybody care to roll up example reports with names?
I'll start then.
Would you ever say aye?
Aye.
Before we get to the audit claims, I know you guys don't like it, but if I add, ask that, we added one thing to the audit claims. Oh, it's in, okay, I'm sorry. All right. So it's in the audit. It was in the audit. It was the final payment to Bellamy for all the work they had on fourth. But before we can pay the bill, we gotta put the money in the account. So what I'm gonna ask for is an authorized payment of the Bellamy and Sons' credit as our contract. We're going to amend G8120, 4550 by the amount of $36,708. Anybody care to make that?
I'll make a motion. I'll start.
Any discussion? Should call the roll then?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Now we'll do the audit claims.
Make a motion. Anything else?
I'll start then.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Item 14 is approval of the minutes of the August 12th. Are you gonna need to get the trustees?
I'll wait. I'll start.
Any discussion? Would you ever say aye?
Aye.
And aye? And opposed? Item 15, new business. Do any trustees have any new business? Got a couple of just housekeeping items if we could. First one is, we got the contract for the 2015 youth bureau agreement. Basically, it's $4,000 that the county gives us for our youth program apart. So I'd like authorization to sign that, so we can get our $4,000.
Make a motion instead. I'll make a motion.
I'll start with a motion.
Any discussion? Better call the roll.
Justice Turner? Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. And the second thing I'd like to get authorization on is we have, we had a first-time home by our program that was funded quite a while ago. We still haven't had people that are still in it. It's not active anymore, you can't get in it now, the people that were funded through it. We have one person that is refinancing a mortgage, and when that happens, they have to, we have to get a sub-recipient agreement, which means that we are the second in line on the lien for that property.
Subordination. From the expert.
Subordinate agreement. Is it sub-recipient?
Yes. Self-selfing.
That's what I'm doing. So at any rate, it was set, Lydia reviewed it, and she had issues with some of the wording. I'd like to sign it when it's okay with Lydia, so that this person can follow through with their finance. So could I, what I'm asking for is authorization to sign the agreement on Friday.
I'll wait. I'll start.
Any discussion on that one? Please call the roll.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. And before I ask for an improvement, anything else? And before I ask for an improvement, anything else? I gave a motion to adjourn.
So move.
If you're gonna say aye?
Aye.